Mr. Costora, as well as our medical provider, Prime Care Medical, who cared about the residents, as Mr. Costora describes them, in our custody. And I couldn't be more proud of that. And as you know, to my knowledge, we have not lost one resident to COVID-19, nor have we lost one corrections officer or other NCP employee. So I'm very pleased about that. Becky Bartlett retired. I wanted to give her her certificate of achievement for her five years of service in Northampton County tonight because Becky has done many amazing things. And when she comes in, I'll sort of draw specifically your attention to those things Becky has done. But she has a cold tonight, and she didn't think it was a good idea for her to come forward. But two things that Becky did in her role as Deputy Director of Administration and Chief Information Officer is provide information throughout the pandemic to the public about not only what was going on generally in the Commonwealth in the county, but what was happening specifically in Northampton County at At Gracemore, our numbers of infections and the unfortunate deaths, the numbers in the prison. And she kept the public completely engaged and aware. And Becky was the one who told them about our testing sites. And Becky was the one who told them about our vaccine sites. It was Becky who led the effort to educate the public about what we were doing to push back against COVID-19. It was also Becky who answered all the questions about elections. And boy, around elections, do we get a lot of questions. And it was Becky who did that. And it was Becky who provided education to our voters. And apparently, we still need to do more work on education with our voters, especially around signing and dating your highlighted outer return envelope. And to that end, I'm pleased to announce tonight, Brittany Whalen is going to be the next Deputy Director of Administration and Chief Information Officer in Northampton County. And Brittany is here with us tonight. Brittany comes to us from the Chamber of Commerce. Her current employer, the Greater Lehigh Valley Chamber of Commerce, I'm reading it to so I can be accurate. She is currently the Vice President of Government Affairs. So she's got some experience dealing with government types. And she's the co-producer of Business Matters. So she has some experience in dealing with media types. We'll describe them as a media type because you're still working there. She's got a tremendous background. She's a graduate of Bloomsburg University. And we are really happy to have Brittany with us tonight because we need Brittany to do things like educating the public about the dangers of fentanyl. Because just a little bit of fentanyl can kill you. The amount that can fit on the top of a pencil head, I think Sue said in our initial media day with respect to our new educational program called Fake Is Real, which can be found at fakeisreal.org. And as I promised, counsel, I would bring Sarah Clark here, who is our media advisor from Kudu Entertainment. And Sue, if you want to come up and introduce Sarah and what she's been doing, I'd appreciate that. And she'll run through for you what it is we're trying to do because we're trying to save lives. That's what we do around here, right? That's what we were doing with our testing against COVID-19 and our vaccine clinics that we're still doing to this day, by the way, trying to save lives around here. And if they'll come up and... Okay. Thank you, Sue.
One up. So I think we talked before Sarah Clark and is the owner of Kudu Creative. And one of the best parts is that it is right here in Easton on Setwood Avenue, I think, across from the pub down the street. So we have somebody local doing this. Sarah, we called her in August or September, along with a few other folks, to solicit proposals. And ultimately, we made the easiest choice, I think, that I've ever made here. And we chose Sarah and her folks. And Sarah went from not really knowing much about fentanyl or the drug and alcohol world to completely immersing herself in what we do. And her and her team, although not experts on the subject matter, she can certainly fool a lot of people into thinking she is. They've just done a fabulous job. So Sarah was going to give you an overview of our campaign and a brief PowerPoint. And she'll show you the website. So Sarah Clark.
Thank you, Sue. Thank you, Lamont, for asking me to be here. Good evening, counsel. My name is Sarah Clark, owner and creative strategist of Kudu Creative. And we have fully launched a campaign over the course of three months for Fentanyl Awareness Program. And it's about two weeks now into the launch, and we have had an amazing response. So I just want to take a little bit of your time to show you what efforts we've been working on and how we're tracking our progress. So I will start. PC. Okay. Okay, so first, we have what we call a campaign badge, right, also known as a logo. But this is a campaign badge. It's not a standalone organization. So Fake Is Real is the concept of fake pills have real consequences. And so we did a couple logo lockups. We did full color, a black and white. And that's where we started. And then we went into a media buy. And we broke up the budget and put it into certain categories of media that we are tracking. So you can see currently on Route 22 eastbound and then also Route 33 up near Bangor, we have all three of our locations covered in Northampton County. Here's a couple design concepts of what you'll see in the future. Our current billboard is campaigns are running for three months. Lamont requested that we have very strong headlines to incite fear and also education. So this was Lamont's concept, Fentanyl in Your MDMA Opioid Cocaine Molly Mass Kills, because we're trying to illustrate the fact that it is in everything. Digital billboards, we have also running throughout the entire Northampton County. Lamar is who we have placed our billboards with, and they have added a lot of extra value to help support the campaign as well because they too want to be a community partner. T-shirt design, I'm actually wearing one of the t-shirt designs as well. We've talked about perhaps selling them. We've had a lot of requests to have a t-shirt. So we were thinking about monetizing them and then putting those funds into helping carry on the campaign or perhaps something in the future, fentanyl awareness related. We also have educational marketing materials, so a rack card leave behind. So we are distributing in multiple locations across Northampton County. And this is something that they can leave for the community in rack cards with information, mostly statistics. We have a QR code on all of our marketing materials as well as easy access to the website, which is called fakeisreal.org. It's also trackable, too, so we can see how many people are scanning the posters and the rack cards to measure our impact. We also have bus shelter posters as well. So a couple of our locations, we have in Bethlehem. These are strategic locations because our target audience is 13 to 35. So we're looking at routes that are part of colleges or schools in addition to every single Bethlehem, Northampton County, and Easton. And then there's an example of what the posters look like, the bus shelter posters. We also have newspaper ads that you will see going out. We also have emails, too. So we're starting, we have a newsletter, and then we have a general email. People can sign up on the website, and they will be included in a monthly newsletter where we will keep people up to date with real-time new information. Because as you know, these fake drugs, they change very quickly. There's always a new one. So we have to stay on top of it. That's one of our goals. Social media graphics, too. This is going to help spread the word. And please, counsel, if you're not following Fake Is Real on Facebook or LinkedIn or Instagram, please do follow. Everybody is a part of this. You can share, just simply reshare the timeline graphics and the stories as well. You can download them from our website. We do have a media kit. And you can, we will be putting a form up there where local businesses can request more posters and rack cards because we have dropped a bunch off already and great response. And they'll contact us if they need more so we can keep that education going. And that concludes our media buy and the creative. A really, really important, probably the major driver of this campaign and saving lives is the website. This is our primary resource of education and also spreading the word. Right here, we have our social media integrations. We also have media, which we just launched. So our first media post is the press conference. And then our second media post will be on our HOPE Trainings because that is starting March 27. Signups are already online. We also have an About as well. And then Get Narcan. I'll allow you guys to explore the website. I'm just going to give high level to save time, be respectful of time. So Get Narcan is where community members would go to sign up for training or to sign up to receive Narcan. And there's, we've utilized all the PA.gov websites, PA Centers of Excellences. So a lot of local resources are already on this website. Another tab for resources, here you can find podcasts, you can find more articles, you can find books, everything related to fentanyl and other people's struggles. How to Help, this is where we have treatment centers, recovery center links, how to spot an overdose, what does that look like, how to help a friend. And then there's facts. There's a lot of facts here. So they're not, they're all taken from PA.gov sites and specific to the Lehigh Valley and Northampton County. We utilized a video that has already existed called This is My Son and This is My Daughter. We took like a 10-second clip of the younger woman in the video to kind of portray a very serious, kind of austere look. And then this is the homepage where it's like a little menu to go deeper into the other pages that are on the main navigation. So you can get more fentanyl facts here. You can have what your pill trying to hide, so more facts here. Learn how to help somebody, so the resources. And then visit the resource centers and learn more about us and how to get in our can. And then this was our media kit that I referenced earlier. This is where people can go to download and share social media facts to spread the word. And that's just a quick run through of the website. Just out of respect of time, please check it out and view the resources and share. And that's all for Fake Is Real.
Does anybody have any questions? I have one.
Yes, Mr. Myers.
Could fentanyl be smoked?
Well, that's a question for Sue.
Good answer. I'm going to refer to my drug and alcohol folks on that, Mr. Myers, and I'm not going to try to venture a most accurate guess on that. So we can get back to you.
It gives me great concern because there's folks out there who are buying weed that sometimes know of two people who have died because they smoked.
Sure. Yeah, the kids who are getting fake pills unknowingly off of social media, TikTok, Instagram, thinking maybe they're buying Adderall or something like that, and they end up being laced with fentanyl or something else, so.
So if you get some facts on that, and it does prove that it can be smoked, maybe we need to add that to the campaign, if possible? Just a field for thought. Go ahead, Kevin.
Just real quick, a public notice, I guess. I believe I read in the media that we can now buy Narcon over counter.
So you, yes, and I'm not sure that there's a cost for it. Anybody can get it, I think, at your local pharmacy. So we have, there's already one area in the county where we get, we can get as much Narcan as we need. Our Drug and Alcohol Administrator has applied through PCCD to try to become distributors, the word that's coming to my mind, but a distributor of Narcan so that we can get larger quantities to be able to share. One of the things that we've talked about with Sarah is trying to get that into every business. So if you have an AED machine, throw in your Narcan kit with your AED machine. So that's, we're working on trying to get a much larger supply. But yes, I think anybody can get it at the pharmacy.
And I think that's huge. I mean, if a family member, especially with this fake pill stuff going on, you know, you really don't know. So I just wanted to put that out there.
And the thing about Narcan, thank you for asking that because everybody should know this. You can't hurt anybody with it. It's just like using any other kind of nose spray. You squirt that up there, and you can't, you know, if you feel like you're getting too much up there, you're not because you can't hurt them with it. So, you know, if you come across somebody who's having a problem, don't worry about, you know. Yep, don't worry about giving them too much Narcan. And Mr. Myers, I have seen at least anecdotal reports of marijuana being adulterated with fentanyl. So I don't know that I've read it in any official publication, but I've heard that, too.
Can I just ask a question? And the other, I'm sorry, the other piece with the Narcan is if someone is not overdosing and you give it to them, you also cannot hurt them. So if you're not sure, you're not going to hurt them with a Narcan.
Mr. Rinsky.
I don't understand why you want to, not you, but like why fentanyl is used if you're killing your clients? It seems like a bad business model.
Well, so we'll bring Kathy Gerley. It's, that's a complicated question to answer that we don't really have the expertise to do justice to it, to the full picture. But there are many reasons why this is happening, including some, some believe it's an intentional, and there's some evidence for this, and former President Trump actually put this to the Chinese about the intentional export of fentanyl to the United States. I think at the press conference, and you can see it on the website, there was enough fentanyl imported in 2022 into the United States to kill every single person in the United States.
So I just want to make sure, too. This isn't, this is in pills or things that you find, street drugs, like on the street, that you buy illicitly? This is not in prescription pharmaceuticals? Is that accurate?
Well, fentanyl, I think fentanyl, if you do the research, you'll find that it was originally invented to be an end-of-life drug. So...
It's very effective, yes.
Yeah, at the end of life. That's what it's for.
If you were buying, you know, OxyContin or something, Adderall or Vivance or something like that, right, from a pharmaceutical, from your pharmacy? Is there any degree or possibility that fentanyl would be in those?
Not to my knowledge. But we'll have Kathy answer that question for you.
Yeah, because I think that that's part of the public thing, too. Because if you're saying, there's a good portion of the population that takes like a Vivance or an Adderall or even, you know, all sorts of pharmaceutical drugs that wonder like, if I take this...
Well, I think Sue and/or Sarah can tell you, apparently, the fake pills look better than the real ones. So I've never seen a Molly, but apparently, your real Molly looks a little raggedy with the, is it an M on it? But your fake Molly looks perfect. So I don't, I don't know if you have anything on it.
I have an image of it. It's actually pretty crazy. You would think the opposite is true.
Yeah, it's counterintuitive.
Because it's so perfect. It's because it's pressed. So the real...
Oh, yeah, I see.
And I...
And the M's different as well.
Yeah, I see how perfect.
Yeah, I see that.
So.
So my other follow-up question, then, one more, is that I know that there's like dare education in school and stuff like that. Is this being implemented in the education in schools? Like in that way, too?
So the Fake Is Real campaign itself has not necessarily rolled out into the schools, but our staff provider, student assistance provider, already provides drug and alcohol education in the school. And so now, obviously, the campaign will be one more, one more tool to do that. The rack cards that Sarah talked about, I think we originally ordered 1,000. We ordered a couple thousand more. We're flying through everything. The amount of folks who have reached out to us and called us for these resources, the posters, which you should see everywhere on county properties and throughout the community, has been very, I think it's been very overwhelming for the fact that we've, are two weeks in.
Yeah, I think this would be a valuable tool to have as a parent in a school of a child who falls within this age range. You know, like I think every parent wants to protect their child, but not every parent knows what Molly or MDMA, whatever, you know what I mean?
Yes, I do. Yeah, so as Sarah said, the target's 13 to, about 30, 35. And then we always say in their parents, too. So I mean, it's for anybody, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. I always wondered what your office was. Now I know. It's cool. Yep. So that'll conclude my report. I normally wouldn't do this, but instead of, you know, being disruptive and trying to seek recognition during the process, I just wanted to speak a minute about Mr. Irwin's appointment to the Personnel Appeals Board. He's in his fifth year now, serving on the Personnel Appeals Board, previously confirmed by County Counsel. And I think there's some confusion about the potentiality for conflict in that the Personnel Appeals Board only hears the appeals of discipline for career service employees. So the Personnel Appeal Board never considers any union issues whatsoever because all of the collective bargaining agreements have their discipline written into the collective bargaining agreements, and they're very much circumscribed by federal and state law. So, you know, we follow the language in the collective bargaining agreements. We follow federal and state law, and that's how those disciplines get dealt with. They never come to the Personnel Appeals Board and never could. Thank you. That concludes my report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Executive. Solicitor would like to make a comment at this point before we move on.
I had a, this was tasked to me last night, and I just had a brief conversation before the meeting, and I mean, brief, with Commissioner Kevin Lott. I think the county executive is correct. The concern that I had was that he would hear appeals from members of his organization. That is not the case, as I understand tonight, and I would amend my opinion. I don't see any concern.
We're clear with that. Let's move on to old business. Public hearing on the ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance by Northampton County Council Concurring with the City of Bethlehem Lower Sulkin Township, Sulkin Valley School District, the Bethlehem Area School District, Providing for Property Exemption for Deteriorated Property Asked to Find in Ordinance 202214 of the City of Bethlehem, Pursuant with Act 76 of 1977 on the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amended 72 PS 4722 ET Square, and Act 42 of 1977 General Assembly on the Commonwealth..." Yeah, I did that, said it again. "4711101, in agreeance with Article 343 of the Codified Ordinance Entitled Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance, Southside LERTA District 2. This was brought forth by Ms. Vargo Hefner and Mr. Lott, introduced an ordinance for February 2, 2023, at the meeting. I'm asking if there's any questions or comments from the public about this. And if there is, you can come up, sign, and tell us what you have to say. If not, counsel, discussion. Mr. Lott.
Just in general, I mean, I'm very supportive of this. You know, I was very happy they shrunk the area down to a smaller area. But just something moving forward with these LERTAs that I'm kind of concerned about is our school property taxes were found illegal in Pennsylvania. So I'm just kind of curious, moving forward, if, you know, if they find that our property taxes have to be done different to support our school districts, how does that affect these LERTAs? That's not going to change my voice, but it is a concern. I mean, you'd still have the county and the city, but does this end up down the road? And I have no idea. I'm just putting it out there. I was think, you know, thinking out loud. Does this down the road affect our LERTAs? Because the school district is the biggest kind of, I don't want to say loser, but invested into the LERTA. So just putting that out there. It'll be interesting to see how that all shakes out in the future with these LERTAs. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, let's move on to the vote.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Lott.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Rinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Stop to by vote of eight to nothing.
Is there any other old business that we need to discuss? If not, we're going to move on to new business. Consideration of the County Exec's Appointment and Reappointment Resolution, Children and Youth, Family Advisory Board, Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, Parks, Recreation, Open Space Advisory Board, and Personnel Appeals Board. Ms. Vargo Hefner, would you please introduce your resolution?
Resolved by Northampton County Council that the following individuals shall be confirmed in their appointments, reappointments, as indicated hereafter. Children, Youth, and Families Advisory Board, Reappointment, Marcus Grundy, Easton, PA, Term to Expire 5/1/25. Michelle Hannah, Bangor, PA, Term to Expire 3/22/25. Patricia Hunter, Easton, Pennsylvania, Term to Expire 3/22/25. Rosemary Coker, Easton, PA, Term to Expire 3/22/25. Teresa Terry Maynard, Panargel, Term to Expire 3/22/25. Terri A. Thomas, Easton, PA, Term to Expire 3/22/25. Jeffrey Warren, Bethlehem, PA, Term to Expire 3/22/25. Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, Appointment, Elected Official Judith A. Haldeman, Northampton, PA, Term to Expire 12/31/23. Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Advisory Board, Appointment Stephanie Green, Northampton, Pennsylvania, Term to Expire 3/19/24. Reappointments Victoria Bastidas, Bethlehem, PA, Term to Expire 3/19/24. John Mauser, Bangor, PA, Term to Expire 3/19/25. Robert Neets, Nazareth, Pennsylvania, Term to Expire 3/19/25. Michael Topping, Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, Term to Expire 3/19/24. Personnel Appeals Board James Irwin, Nazareth, PA, Term to Expire 2/3/25. Thomas Schlegel, Easton, PA. Kathleen Wedge, Catasqua, PA, Same Term of Expiration.
This question. Mr. Heckman.
I had yesterday, I'd mentioned something about one of the individuals because they're running for a county office, but I have no concerns, and that's, everything's been disleged. I recommend everyone, I have no problem.
Anybody else? Are we clear there? Mr. Irwin wants to say something? If he doesn't, Kevin, or... I thought you wanted something. If not, let's call for a vote.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lott?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Well, you know, it's, no, yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Topped by a vote of eight to zero.
Consideration of Personnel Upgrade Request Resolution, Department of Courts and Administration, Juvenile Justice. Ms. Vargo, you have here, would you introduce that? And Mr. Green, say if there's any questions.
It is hereby resolved, Northampton County Council, that the position of two full-time positions of shift supervisors pay grade CS twenty-four D, salary fifty-one thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars, total of a hundred and three thousand four hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And the Department of Court Administration, Juvenile Justice Center, shall be upgraded to pay grade CS twenty-five, three C, salary sixty-two thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars, total one hundred and twenty-four thousand six hundred and seventy dollars, effective the seventeenth day of February, twenty twenty-three. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time position of shift supervisor, pay grade CS twenty-three C, salary forty-nine thousand five hundred and twenty-one. And the Department of Court Administration, Juvenile Justice Center, shall be upgraded to pay grade CS twenty-five, two B, salary five, fifty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, effective seventeenth of February, twenty twenty-three. Further resolved by the Northampton County Council, that the position of two full-time positions of shift supervisor, pay grade CS twenty-two B, salary forty-seven thousand three hundred and eighty-nine dollars, total nine, ninety-four thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And the Department of Court Administration, Juvenile Justice Center, shall be upgraded to pay grade CS two-five, one A, salary fifty-seven thousand eighty-one dollars, total one hundred and fourteen thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars, effective seventeenth day of February, twenty twenty-three. It is further resolved in the Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time position of shift supervisor, pay grade CS twenty-one A, salary four hundred and five thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars. And the Department of Court Administration, Juvenile Justice Center, shall be upgraded to pay grade CS twenty-five, one A, salary fifty-seven thousand and eighty-one dollars, effective seventeenth day of February, twenty twenty-three. This was discussed yesterday at Personnel Committee, and it was iterated to us that the money is in their budget.
Discussion from Council? Mr. Lott?
Yes, I had a question for Mr. Green, if he has a moment.
Mr. Weiss here?
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Last night, it was stated that the money is in the budget.
Correct.
Where did that money come from? Was that just extra money in the account, or did you move something to, to make that money for these raises?
Well, we have vacancies at the Juvenile Justice Center, so the money is in the budget that was approved by this council already.
And the object is, we're going to try to fill these vacancies? Will we still have the money to pay for those vacancies when we fill them?
There are existing positions right now, there's people in those positions right now. So, once they move over, that money is there, we have the money in the budget. If I have to do an amendment, which I don't think I'll have to, I'll come back before this council. But that's not going to happen.
How many people, how many juveniles are we currently serving in our justice center?
There's twenty-seven juveniles there right now.
Twenty-seven?
Yes.
Out of those twenty-seven, how many are Northampton County residents?
Out of the twenty-seven right now, I don't have that number right now. I can get it for you. I would say probably right now, out of the twenty-seven, if I have to guess, probably eighteen or nineteen.
So the, the majority of them are out of our county, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, I've heard you say very often in, in the past, and that, that this is a moneymaker, but we also put four million dollars, if I'm not, if I remember correctly, John Kusick actually brought it up, as far as, is this sustainable? The fact that we put in four million dollars into this, into your, into
It is sustainable, it is sustainable, and it is a revenue maker. If we had the staff to bring in more out-of-county residents, it would make the money. But we're not, we don't have the money right now to pay the staff, because they're making sixteen dollars and forty-six cents, and we're not getting enough people to cover bringing more residents in. So if we had the staff, if we paid the people, and we had the staff, we could bring more residents in, and we could charge more money, and we'd be making over two million dollars like we did in years past.
But if we don't have the staff, and we don't have the, the clients, why are we still, wouldn't that kind of foul the money? I mean, shouldn't our costs be reduced? I mean, we put four million dollars into this thing this year.
Yeah.
You're telling me we don't have the staff, and we don't?
You said, we put four million dollars in?
That is the number I remember, yes. And if I'm wrong, please correct.
I don't remember four million dollars, but what I'm saying is, if we had the staff, and we could fully compliment our staff members, then we could bring more clients in from out-of-county.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. I'm going to be supporting this, but I would actually like to see, we, we got two studies done. We got a study on Greystale, we got a pay study done. I think there was some issues, if you remember, there was a story in the morning call, there were several ex-employees that had issues the way this was managed. I think an operational study with the money, we had some very good prices on our other studies, an operational study of the juvenile justice system would be appropriate. And throw in sustainability study. I mean, we, we did this, we're doing this other places, it, it, and there has been a lot of issues down there. You just explained there's issues down there, we don't have the people. And maybe that study just says
But you know what? But it shows, that's not just Northampton County, that's all around the state and around the country. There was a report that was sent to the governor, that it's a problem, that we're don't, we're not paying people enough to do these jobs. And, and what you are talking about, those articles that Rudy Miller wrote, that has all been non-founded. All those reports, everything that you're talking about, that Rudy Miller wrote in the paper, have been unfounded and unjustified. Okay? So what you're hearing is rumor mill, Mr. Lott.
Well, that's fine, except for
And, and I welcomed, and I welcomed a study, and I said that to this council. I said, yes, let's do a study down there, I'll welcome it, and if you give me the staff, I'll show you a return, that no other place can give you a return in this county, but I can guarantee you we'd have return if we staffed that facility. Because we've done it in the past, every year, down there. And when Mr. Brown, when you were, when you were the executive, did we not have a surplus all the time? Over two million dollars every year.
And that's, that's the point I'm making. It was making money, and, and now it's not, and, and
Because we don't have the staff, sir.
So, looking at it, just like you said, you welcome a study, other
I do.
on it. And, and, and let me just add, me personally, I don't want the county to make money on it, I want the county to break even on it. I saw what happened when counties make money up north. It did not end well for judges or, or, or the county up there. People making money on juveniles is not a, a, something I think the county should be in business for. But that, I, but that being said, I
You're not insinuating that the court is paid for cash, are you here in Northampton County?
No, I cannot say that. I absolutely cannot say that.
I hope you're not.
I said, there was a problem up there, and
Okay, but that problem's not here. So don't, don't equate Luzern County to Northampton County, because that's, that's not appropriate.
I would like to make a motion that we do a sustainability study and an operational study on the Juvenile Justice Center.
Can we make a motion while we're discussing another
Hold on a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Can we do this first?
I withdraw that.
One thing at a time.
I withdraw that, I apologize.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on what we're currently doing at this point right now? Go ahead, John.
Mr. Green, how are you?
Yes, good, how are you, Mr. Green?
So just, so we can keep everybody up to speed with what's going on here, how many beds, or how many, I'm sorry, children could the Juvenile Justice Center fully house if you're fully staffed?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four, and if you're at that number, you're saying that not only would the county break even, but the county be making money?
Yes, as we, as we have in the past.
And your biggest problem is that you have a requirement of a minimum of an associate's degree, and you said yes, right, you prefer, prefer a bachelor's degree.
Well, that's, that's for the supervisors, shift supervisors, I prefer the bachelor's degree, but for the youth care workers, yes, they have to have a minimum of associate's degree.
And their starting pay is what?
Sixteen dollars and forty-six cents an hour.
So as much as, yes, we are doing a pay study, which I think is badly needed to address these concerns, we do have a real-time problem. And that real-time problem is, we have children in our care, and we don't have enough people, and we can't get enough people to come care for them. So, I do understand that this issue would probably be getting addressed in the near future with the pay study, but I think there is enough urgency to be able to justify voting yes and passing this now. So I will be supporting this.
Ms. Sarinski?
I just have a couple questions. Will, when you said that your, these would help bring more people in, like, you would be able to
What would help bring more people?
Your, these changes with the employees, like, paying them more?
Yes.
If you had an increase in staff, you would have more clients? So, I, do you call them clients?
Yeah, because we are mandated by the state to have
Right.
a ratio of staff to, to clients, residents.
Right, so with the, these aren't adding positions, these are giving current employees pay raises.
Shift supervisors, yes.
Okay, so you're not adding staff, you're paying them more. So do you perceive that this will be the starting rate for other employees entering?
I don't know, this is for the shift supervisors, only six of them there, and then you have youth care workers who are under the union, who, there's fifty-two of them.
Okay.
And their starting salary is sixteen forty-six, like I told Mr. Gofredo, they're at sixteen forty-six. So these positions of the shift supervisors will show, like, potential advancement to those youth care workers who can advance into those positions eventually.
Okay, you can only have so many supervisors, though, not everybody.
We have six.
You have six supervisors. And those are non-union?
They're non-union.
Six non-union supervisors. Because I'm looking here at the, the adopted budget that we have, and it says, you know, salaries full-time, one million forty, salaries union full-time, two million, one, one hundred and twenty-three thousand eight hundred, salaries union part-time, a hundred and eleven thousand five hundred. So what part of that budget are you currently using for those salaries? And that's currently budgeted for the existing rates? Like, how, how do you, how, how do you get more out of that? Because when we created the budget
Right.
this was what you based the wages on, right?
Right.
Okay. So, if you, current, these are current existing employees, and you are increasing their wage, but you budgeted for the existing wage, you didn't budget for the increase?
Right, but we have, we have vacant positions where I can move some of that money around.
Okay, so you're going to use the vacant positions to, that you budgeted for? Okay, so in that, how many vacant positions are there?
Right now, we have thirty-four vacant
Thirty-four vacant, and of the thirty-four vacant, how many of those are union?
Well, most of them would be union.
Okay, so they wouldn't fall, this wouldn't fall under that union anyway?
But it's a pooled account anyway, I mean, it's, I can use that money, I can move that
Oh, you can move it from bucket to bucket.
Yeah, I can move it around, yeah. I can move it around.
I'm just asking, because I want to make sure that
No, I know you're asking, because every time I come here, you got, you two ask me a lot of questions, so
Because I, because I want to understand this, and I'm sorry I missed the meeting yesterday, I had other things.
I understand, I understand.
Yeah, I, I tried to listen into it, but it's, it is more difficult when you're listening than when you're having things in front of you. I just want to make sure, and I, I, I have to say, I am uncomfortable when you, when you say, and I know that you're not
Say what?
I know that you're not saying that
There's a hidden agenda, or why you're asking so many questions?
No, 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 that's, that's definitely not what I'm getting at.
Okay.
I'm uncomfortable when you say, we could be making the county money, because again, I don't think we, this is an area where that kind of business mentality
It's not the business mentality, what I'm saying is this, is that if we can bring in, and we've been doing this for over years, there's, there's an example, we've been doing, bringing a surplus of money in at the juvenile center, and it goes to the general fund, and no one complained about it then, but now you're saying that you have a problem with me having a business mentality?
No, I would, no.
That doesn't make any sense, you can't have it both ways.
No, you definitely can't.
You can't.
But I would refrain, reframe that as, there's a need, there's children who are in need, and they need this treatment, this, this care.
Ms. Sarinski, I've been saying that for the last twelve months, thirteen months, when I come to council, that we have to protect these children, and I need more staff. And I've been asking this council to help me out, to get more money.
Sure.
So
I, I'm, I'm just asking the question and making sure the money's there, and
The money's there, the money's there.
Okay. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I appreciate what you do, and what the services you bring.
And I appreciate what you do.
But I just, I just want to say that it, to the public
Yeah.
when you talk about it that way, it makes other people uncomfortable, too. Do you know what I mean? So I'm just trying to be helpful.
Hold on, I want you to, please enlighten me, what makes them, you uncomfortable when I say, when I'm asked a question, if I had staff, would it generate revenue? And I said, yes, it's done it in the past.
Right.
And why is it making it, why does it make you uncomfortable? I don't understand that.
It makes me uncomfortable because it sounds like we're profiting off of juvenile justice.
I think that's your opinion, because that's, if I came off that way, then that, that wasn't my intent, because
I know it wasn't.
Yeah, it's not my intent.
And so that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
If we refrain that, and you go back to the language of protecting children, that would be a lot better than saying
Yeah, I'm a mandated reporter, I protect children, and I have to protect children.
I do believe that.
That's what I've been doing most of my life, when I worked in a juvenile
And I'm not questioning that, I'm not questioning that at all.
Well, now you're making me feel uncomfortable. Before we
I like that.
I don't think that I could make you feel uncomfortable, but if I did, I apologize, it wasn't my intention.
There was a quote I heard, "Don't let my confidence, okay?" All right, "Don't let my confidence, all right?" You know, embarrass your insecurities, or whatever it is. I heard Leon Sanders said it, so
Listen, we're good here, I'm just saying.
That's what he said.
Before I give the, turn over to Mr. Heckman.
Oh, yeah, I had one more question, sorry.
Well, go ahead, then.
One more question. How many more employees would you need to be, to, to function at that max amount of eighty-four, the thirty-four vacancies? Is that correct?
Thirty-four, no, I mean, even if we, if we could get twenty, we would be, we would be good. We, we'd be, we'd be good, if we can get twenty more youth care workers, we'd be at a comfortable level. But Mr. Jamar Milvin may be able to answer that more effectively than I, but I think about twenty, that's a good guess, I mean, I
So twenty more youth care workers would help bring that status up to eighty-four? And is there, like, a wait list? There's
There would be a wait list, because we would be the only one in the northeast corner, and we would have, everybody's requesting beds every day right now, we have to turn people away.
So, yeah, so how many people have you turned away? Because
A lot, every day, we get calls every day, and multiple calls, I can't give you a number,
Oh, you don't track that?
But we get multiple calls, no.
Oh, okay.
We get multiple calls every day, we have seventeen contracts with different jurisdictions.
Because it would seem to me that if you did track that number, it would justify, not that it's not justified, but it would help justify the need for more employees and the need for more wages to go higher for these.
No, I, I mean, we know the need is there, I mean, I understand what you're saying.
But it would create more urgency?
No, I can, there's an urgency, I mean, I've been coming here for fourteen months, there's an urgency, we all know that these people need to make more money. They're making sixteen dollars and forty-six cents. I mean, come on. And then they're paying union dues, or they're really making fourteen dollars. So, where are we going? I mean, the urgency is there, it's there.
I got it, we're having a conversation, not a problem.
Mr. Heckman and Mr. Brown?
Thank you. Okay, this, this discussion has actually been held about Greystale many times. There was a time when Greystale made a lot of money, and it was dumped into the general fund, and in fact, they'd come to meetings and say, we made X amount, why can't we keep it? We're subsidizing a bunch of other things in the county. And they were right.
Did that make you feel uncomfortable saying that?
Not me, but I'm, I'm, I'm speaking for me, I'm not speaking for anybody else, and nor do I, I'm, I'm, I think everybody up here, if anybody knows me, I think everybody up here has the same rights as I do, to, to request and ask questions and, and
Absolutely.
speak to issues. I, and, and so, and as far as the budgeting money goes, if, if yours, people are as good as anybody else in the county as far as departments go, I can tell you that there's more than enough money squirreled away, and I'm not picking on you. The idea that people put their budgets together with a red line pen and say, this is December thirty-first, and at that point, I'll be out of money if this changes, I, I can't speak I, I can't speak for any administrators, but, but they probably would be fired, because you're always gonna have a little bit of something in your budget.
Right.
Uh, and, and also, every day you go by with an unfilled position, that's an entire pay and benefits day, that is it back in your pot, that can never be required, uh, taken away. So right now, you're already sitting on a fair pot of money that is available to you to use as you see fit. You, you have up to a ten percent move things around without even coming to us or anybody else. That hasn't changed, you can move around. So, so I mean, I, I don't have a problem, I, as far as making money, maybe in today's modern parlance, it, it may be abruptly accurate, and, and maybe there's a softer way we can come up with saying that. But I mean, Greysdale, when Greysdale stopped producing income for the county.
Right.
Over what their needs were, there, that's when the push came, dump Greysdale, dump Greysdale, get rid of it, it's not a core county function. Fortunately, that didn't happen, and I think Greysdale one day may again do it, I don't know. The laws in Harrisburg made it rough, the privates lobbying, lobbyists are better than our lobbyists. But, um, and this, I've heard people say, "Well, it's not a county, it's not a required core function." To me, these are core functions of the county. I know there's been talk, and I'll, I'll be to admit, I've heard the talk, too, cuz you don't have to, there's no secrets in this building.
Right.
You, you probably know that by now, there's no secrets. You can try your best, but there's no secrets. That's, there are folks who say, "We wish we would get rid of the juvenile justice, the juvenile detention center, we don't need it." Well, that was my feeling when we made a department out of community and economic development, in the sense that three people could do everything that they do, but it became this big department, that's certainly not a core function of county government.
Right.
Uh, you've got people tripping over themselves in the community, saying, "I'm bringing the jobs in, no, I'm bringing the jobs in." So I, I think a lot of it is ideology, it comes to what does somebody believe or what don't they believe? If you didn't exist over there, I think there'd be a feeling there's more money to put in other places, and that what those other places would be, I don't know, I'm not a big fan of giving governmental officials a lot of discretionary funds. Uh, that's why I like local government, we can keep our eye on things better. Uh, but, uh, I think you're a core function, and I think we have to do everything we can to keep that running, I don't care what the other counties do. And, and, and if there is a need to look into it.
Right.
As, as Mr. Lot was concerned, I'm certainly not opposed to that, I mean, look, I've been saying that about Greysdale forever. I don't, I don't think anybody's doing anything wrong, I think they all have the best of intentions. Uh, we had, back in the day, we brought in consultants at Greysdale, and, and the Greysdale management went crazy. "How dare you look over our shoulder?" Well, there were all these things they found that we weren't collecting the funds we should collect. And I'm not saying that's happening there.
Right.
But, uh, I, I know you've had problems over there, and, uh, I, I'm aware of that, and I don't have the answer. I'm, I'm, hopefully we'll get it worked out, I agree with you on the wages. If anybody's remembered anything I've said of the many things I say up here, I, I, I think our pay, many parts of our pay are fine. The start, excuse me, starting pays are terrible in many areas, it's just, I don't think it's sustainable in a modern economy. And we're, we're now part of like a New Jersey suburb, we're not Northampton County with the fields. So you need more money to get people in, every part of county government. So I, I'm, I, you know, I, I understand that you have the funds. Uh, if, if we wanna have zero-based budgeting, uh, across the board for every department, I, I don't know how we do that, because every day where a position is vacant in any department, that's money now they have in their budget.
Right.
Extra. So, um, but I, I, I'm looking forward to finding out, I know you've talked to us quite a few times about things over there, and I, I'm concerned about it myself, I'll be honest with you.
And then the other thing we can look into, and, and Mr. Heckman, if you wanna look into it, I can tell you this, if that juvenile center is not there, and we are exporting these children out, we're gonna pay a lot more money, I can guarantee it.
Well, and that's part of a course service.
A lot more money.
Just end, I'll be finished. I believe trying to keep the kids here.
Right.
In the area is important, and it, it, at the end of the day, I guess I'm just too old school with county government. There are, we're, we're not a, a city that's, we're a county government, which means we do the very unsexy things. Checks are nice, handing out check, everybody wants to hand out a check and cut a ribbon and have their portrait taken. But what we do is take care of those who don't get taken care of, and try and help the community with issues that nobody else wants to deal with. I always said, "We are the state's wastebasket." And I know we had a meeting earlier, when Mr. Zirinsky had a lady come in and told us about wanting to change laws. And I thought she made a good point, and I didn't wanna drag out that meeting because she had another one, but my feeling is, so the next time the state officials come, and they're handing your group a check, or they're cutting a ribbon, or they're taking a picture, lean on them and say, "Excuse me, if you could get away from the press for a minute, hey, why don't you move out in Harrisburg and pass some of this legislation, because all of that zoning is on them, our streams are on them, garbage is on them, we can't do anything." So I, I, I'm sorry, I, I gotta, because I know this has come up in the past, at different times, different administrations, and there is this undercurrent of, we don't need juvenile detention center. I disagree.
So do I.
I, I think, does it cost money? Most of what we do costs money, and most of it, we don't get anything back, except maybe a better community and a more stable community. So I don't know, I, uh, I'm, I'm anxious, I would wait to hear the future and see where we can go, and if there's anything we can do other than pay. I mean, I'm sure, you know, you would be open to that, too, if, if, if it's a overall study again.
If we can get the youth care workers paid, you'll see a difference.
Well, that's all, and I, I just wanted to clarify from my perspective, my understanding of things, where you would have that money. It would be the same as if Mr. Barron did it or somebody else.
Right.
He has a position that's vacant, and even before the vacancies, there's...
They just move money around all the time.
People put money in the budget that they don't necessarily have to. I'm, I'm not picking on anybody, but I'll say it, and somebody can say he doesn't know what he's talking about. But I worked in an administration, too, and with administrators, so anyway, thank you.
Mr. Brown.
Mr. Green, you have an operating surplus when you're properly staffed, is what you're telling the council.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and you, the juvenile center provides a value-added service to surrounding counties, which allows you to contract, which actually saves those counties money, cuz if they had to actually build and operate their own juvenile center, uh, that it would cost them a lot more money than the cost of the beds that we charge.
That's correct, just like Lehigh County right now, they regret what they did when they shut down their detention center. And they're calling us right now to say, "Hey, will you come and work with our court so we can open our facility back up? Cuz it's costing them a lot more money now."
I recall during the budgeting process, uh, the cost that we are charged per bed uh, is significantly lower than other surrounding facilities, and by quite a bit. So you do have some flexibility, even in the event you would find that your operating costs were escalating, that you could actually increase and, uh, match that with your, your revenue needs.
And that's done by the state matrix, and our fiscal officer explained it to me. Um, there's a matrix on it, and, um, that number could increase, cuz right now, it's, I think it's two ninety-five or three hundred dollars.
If need be, right.
If need be, it could, you know, be increased.
And I, and I do recall when I was executive, that there was always a, an operating surplus, which I believe we reached in and utilized at some point.
Yes, you did.
Thank you.
You know, she made my point much classier than I could do it, with my words.
More succinctly, I think that's the word, succinctly.
It's like he was an executive.
Miss Lot?
Yes, just real quick, yes, very well-chosen of words, very nice, Mr. Brown. I don't, and if I gave the impression, I, I apologize, I didn't really hear anybody making statements about closing the facility. When we questioned Greysdale, when we grilled those people, nobody, I never accused anybody of trying to close Greysdale. When we did it, when, when it was brought up about a study on Greysdale, nobody ever accused you of trying to close Greysdale. All of a sudden, we, we, we talk about the juvenile justice system, we, it almost seems like you're saying, "Don't ask questions, don't touch that," and we're gonna go to the extreme. You asked those questions, I just asked a couple basic questions, next thing, we're closing the facility. I think Mr. Kustic was the first person that brought that up at budget, is it sustainable? That doesn't mean we wanna close it, that means we wanna make it sustainable. It, it, a study doesn't mean that everything's wrong, just like Greysdale, it, it, you, you, you want other eyes on it. So I'm, I'm a little taken back by the way that got spun around. We never did this, we never did this when we talk about Greysdale, but now we do this when we talk about the, the...
Mr. Lot, are you saying that I, I think that you were trying to infer that...
I heard a lot about closing it down, and, and I don't think Ms. Zirinsky or I ever mentioned it.
I never mentioned it to her. He said, he said there was a rumor, he said there was a rumor.
It's been for years.
It's been said there's a rumor, that's what he said.
Predates all of us.
That's what he said.
Yeah, I mean...
Call for order, please.
I was just pointing out facts.
Call for order, please. Let's take a breath, guys. This is getting a little far-fetched from what we're trying to establish. Um, we, we're here discussing pay increases, and, and we've gone down a rabbit hole that we don't need to go down. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna say a couple things, and we're gonna go call for the vote on this at this point. Mr. Green, you had already mentioned, I had written it down, that it would cost more for us to ship our guys out quite a bit. Is that correct?
Yes.
And it was discussed yesterday that the union workers are in arbitration rate, correct?
They don't have an arbitration date. The last I heard, the last I heard...
And, and, and you commended the exec for giving them a huge, a, a big enough contract for them to go with, and they have still yet not answered to it.
They rejected it, they rejected what Mr. McClure, um, offered them, and what, what he offered them was what I asked for. Um, but they rejected it. And the last I heard, when I spoke to Mr. Irwin yesterday, I asked him, "Where's that with the arbitration?" And he indicated that the arbitrator that they had sent an email that he retired. Now they're looking for another arbitrator.
Oh, okay.
So I said to him, "We need to put some pressure, and we need to get to the table," because I've been talking about this for thirteen months. So where are we going here? It seems to me like a stall tactic. I don't know what's going on, but those salaries are out of my control. These salaries are in my control. So something needs to give here, because we need to pay these people more money.
Let, let's make the record clear, then, okay? You're within your budget to do what you wanna do.
Yes, sir.
And it seems to me that, and let me just sit here from the point of trying to gobble all this up in the last few weeks, that anytime someone comes in here from the Justice Center or the DA's office, there's red flags stopping everything we're trying to do, they're trying to do, and they control their own budget. We need to rethink what's going on here and come up with a way of building this bridge, and I know we spoke about it before, but this needs to be done. The resistance is coming against these two departments that are not under control of the administration is a problem. And that's not the way we're supposed to operate, we're supposed to be operating for the welfare of the community. The biggest part of this point right now, I'm very disappointed with, is that Mr. Green's been here for over a year, trying to get things done with this juvenile justice center, and every time he comes here, there's roadblocks. We have gotta find a way to make this thing work better for the folks that we serve.
And with that said... Mr. Myers, and one more thing, I'd be remiss if I didn't say this, and what you said is accurate, because I come before this council.
And you don't have to.
I'm asking for an upgrade, okay? I'm asking for an upgrade, everybody else asks for upgrade. The last time I was here, I asked for an upgrade, I was up here for twenty-five minutes answering questions from this side. Mr. Custora comes up, he doesn't get one question. What's going on here? He asked for an upgrade, I asked for an upgrade, you guys remember this? I was up here for twenty-five minutes, and I had to explain myself. He comes up right after me, doesn't get one question. So what's the difference here? You tell me. That's what I'm asking. So that's why I think it's a little personal, I think it's a little personal. Or politically motivated.
You're absolutely incorrect.
Or politically motivated, or politically motivated, and I don't like it.
Okay, we can, we can, we can, we can put this to rest.
And it's not fair, it's not fair.
I, I, I'm, I'm calling for the vote, and we're going to move on, but everybody's stated their point of view, let's go on with the vote, please.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Stopped at by a vote of eight to zero.
I thank you, Mr. Green, for coming and giving us your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on for consideration of an amendment for personal request, Department of Administration for the Conservation District. Ms. Varg, you have to...
It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council, that resolution number, whatever, shall be amended as indicated hereafter. Sections marked with strike, let me see, number one three six, twenty twenty-two. Hereby resolved, Northampton County Council, that one full-time position of the program coordinator pay grade, CSGR twenty-six, salary fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars shall be created in the Department of Administration, Conservation District, effective January one, twenty twenty-three. This was discussed yesterday at the personnel meeting, and it is a correction to line it up with the, as the way it was presented in the budget.
Calculations are wrong on this, if there's any questions on that.
Thank you.
Discussion? If not, can we please call for the vote?
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Stopped at by a vote of eight to zero.
Consideration for a partnership agreement with the Wild, Wild, Wildlands Conservatory Resolution. Ms. Zirinsky, would you please read the resolution, please?
These are the Wildlands. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Northampton County Council, that the Northampton County Executive is authorized to enter into a grant agreement effective as of the date of the last signature, and shall be in effect for a period of not to exceed five years, at which time it will be the subject to review, renewal, revision, or expiration. Further, the Northampton County Executive, through the Office of the Superintendent of the Division of Parks and Recreation, or designee, is authorized to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligations. Three, authorize the funding in the annual amount of seventy-five thousand dollars to be paid in biannual payments from January one, twenty twenty-three, to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. This was discussed at the Energy, Environment, and Land Use Committee already today, thanks.
Discussion. Yeah, Mr. Barron's not here, is this, this is a contract? Is this a contract?
This is a contract with, uh, a partnership with Wildlands Conservancy, and if I have my notes, here they are. Dr. Abigail Paddishaw from Wildlands Conservancy gave a presentation on this today. She discussed how this yields four million dollars, uh, of investment in Norco on behalf of Wildlands Conservancy in terms of helping us with habitat restoration, streams, and county parks, trails, and greenways connections, educational opportunities, they help in the acquisition of funds and grants to enable this to happen, and this partnership has yielded, um, a lot of, uh, good in this county. Twenty-four hundred acres is permanently, uh, protected at this point, and the Wildlands Partnership, along with Northampton County Parks Recreation and Open Space Initiative, helps to keep and maintain those areas. I think this is, um, a very valid request for a partnership, and that we maintain this. This is a partnership that has existed for the last five years, and did expire December thirty-first of last year.
Any other discussion?
It's, this is a grant for him, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
I sat in on the committee meeting as well, the presentation was great, uh, seems like our Parks Department really does a great job.
Fantastic job.
And if it's a, if it's any indication of what the future will hold, I would say, don't change a thing, they're doing a good job.
I agree, I just have one stipulation, we need to start looking at some of these contracts that come this way, because they're sent to us, and we just agree, we don't know what the hell's in them. And you have mentioned things before, and I think we, I'm not trying to hold anything up. I just think when, when we do get into this contract, maybe we need to have it sent to us so we can all look at it. We're going to vote on it, it's a fantastic program. I mean, going into the parks now, you know, and, and I, I am amazed every time I walk into our parks, how beautiful they are and the, and the work that these guys are doing. But it's not just here, we need to start belving into this and make sure we're not doing anything, but I love what they're doing. I just think, you know, that we get a copy of this, so everybody can understand what, what the contracts look like, that's all I'm saying. If I'm wrong, tell me I'm wrong. If, anybody else have anything to say?
No, you, you're, I mean, council has the right to see any contract that they, that they vote on. That includes contract negotiations with employees. I mean, they don't negotiate, but you have a right to review it before you vote, you don't have to vote, you can put off the vote until you get a, a copy of it. A lot of times council hasn't done it, cuz some of these contracts are big and minutia, but, uh, certainly have a right to it if you want it.
Uh, Mr. Peddely.
There's a really simple solution, ask Superintendent Cope.
Yeah.
To give you a copy of the contract when it's executed.
That's all I'm asking for. Mr. Giovanni.
I have just one correction, Ms. Zirinsky said it was twenty-four hundred acres, it was twenty-four thousand.
Thousand acres.
On the presentation, I saw it said twenty-four hundred.
No, twenty-four thousand. No, 24,000.
That's farmland preservation. This is conservation land.
I thought you said-
Within the Wildlands Conservancy partnership.
I thought it was 24,000.
Well, that's a lot of land.
Listen, you can question me. If you, if you find out that it's different, I would love to add a zero to that number. And if that is so, so be it.
All right, let's call for the vote, please.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Absolutely.
Stopped at by a vote of eight to zero.
The next one has been withdrawn, if I'm not mistaken?
No.
No, no, it's a resolution.
It's a resolution? It's a resolution? Okay. Consideration of a withdrawal resolution for 41-2019, Cholora Conservation Easement Resolution. Mr. Zirinsky, you want to read the resolution, please?
Yep.
Thank you.
Now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council. The Northampton County Council hereby accepts the Nature Conservancy's withdrawal of the Cholora Conservation Easement Project Grant Award in Resolution Number 41-2019 and the executed grant agreement. Further, the Northampton County Executive through the Office of the Program Administrator of the Northampton County Livable Landscapes Program or Designee is authorized to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligations in this process, project. The Northampton County Council further authorizes the Northampton County Executive to unencumber the $118,125 and place it back into the appropriate fund of the Livable Landscapes Grant Program OSI, environmentally sensitive funds, org key 40732, from which it was allocated. We also discussed this in the ELU meeting as well.
That's $118,000, correct.
Yes, it says that that is the amount that will go back and can be used for other projects. It was designated in 2019 when the Nature Conservancy entered into an agreement with the Cholora family for a conservation easement. I believe it was near the Kitatini Ridge. And at this time, the Cholora family does not wish to move forward and has rescinded their involvement. So now the funding comes back and we can use it for something else.
Okay. No other discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Stopped at by a vote of eight to zero.
Is there any other new business that needs to be discussed?
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
I just want to bring to attention to council, and you may have heard, there were two people who passed away, and I was unaware of it. And, and I, I was stunned. Mr. Redding, Ed Redding, who was a solicitor here for years. And he passed away last year sometime, and I, I just was made aware of it. But he was very involved with the county for many years. And another individual who was a county council member, a county council president, Lad Siftar. And he passed away, I think, January 29th. I didn't know about that either. I had found out. And I just want to point out that while I certainly had differences, even though Mr. Sifter and I were on the same party, we had our differences at times. He was a rabid economic development man. And he, for whatever happened in his private life, once he left here, he was a president of the C cap at one time, a great achievement for somebody who's a county council, home rule charter person as opposed to commissioner. And he also served on NACO, the National. So he was very involved in county government, and he'd come back with many, many reports. And I just think it's worth noting that, that their passing and the contribution they made to the county while they were here. And I, I just wanted to, to do that and to pass on to all my fellow council members that no matter how much I may disagree or not agree or even debate, I, I will always defend your right to have the positions you want. I get more angry when people on the other side of the bar get, try to interfere, and you've heard me go off on that too. I just think that whether we disagree or not, and Lad was, was like that. Lad, I actually, we'd argue at a meeting, I'd give him rides home because he needed a ride home. So I, I just think that it's important that, that we all keep in mind, you'll never find a stronger defender of the rights of your elected legislators than myself. And if you, if anybody ever jumps on you because of something you set up here, I'll be happy to defend your right to say it. That's all I have.
Count, yes, Mr.?
Yes. Um, I am not going to move that motion forward about the juvenile justice system, though, partly because I, I'm not quite sure what I've been accused of, but I've been accused of something that I don't like the juvenile justice system. I'm not quite sure exactly what he feels I'm doing here. But that being said, there has been issues down there. And, and, and it was a lot of turnover. And I think it makes some sense, but I want the rest of council to think about it. Because I don't want to be like I'm going after the juvenile justice center. But I think an operational study on it, it, we used to have a lot of people there. We don't have a lot of people. We've got to turn over people there. And you can blame it all on the wages, maybe it is all on the wages, but to take a look at from a different perspective is what we agreed here to do on other departments. So I'm not going to move it forward because apparently I have an issue. But I would ask the rest of council to consider, you know, we, we have some money left over from our studies. I think those, those studies, I was quite amazed at the numbers that came in. I'm shocked and happy because I thought, I thought it would be triple that. So any, anyway, I would just ask you guys to consider that, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Myers.
Yes, Ms. Varghese Hefner.
Oh, I'm sorry, did he?
I did not recognize him yet.
I just wanted to address what you said, and I think that council has a mechanism to do a little more gentle investigation than we have been doing, which is the Courts and Corrections Committee. And I think we should be using that opportunity to continue to bring the Juvenile Justice Center forward to ask any questions, to give more frequent reports. I think that would be really helpful as a starting point. I don't disagree with your idea of doing an operational study. I think I'd like to see how the thing we have going goes. And then if we are somewhat successful and like the results we get, I don't see it as a problem to use the same model to investigate another part of the government. But I, I just think that maybe we haven't done our own due diligence as a council by offering them to come, by asking questions, because we don't have that committee as frequently as we should. And Mr. Green has always made himself at least available to me to answer any questions. He's given me a tour. So I think we should just continue to ask Mr. Billman to come and keep, you know, asking about the census, hearing more reports, hearing about the treatment, hearing who's sending their kids. Because I'm not disinterested. I just think to go from here to here is a bit much. But I, I don't disagree with the option. I also just really want to see how this first study goes because it's taken us at least a year to get to the point where we still aren't yet because we haven't been able to agree to spend that money yet. We have to wait till March to do so.
Ms. Zirinsky.
I just want-
Because I have a discussion amongst council right now, so you got the whole offense, Mr. Green.
No, I, I just want to say, like, I hear what you're saying, Lori, and I hear what you're saying. And so when Mr. Green is here, it is an opportunity for us to ask questions. So we should be able to ask questions freely without accusations of our intentions. When I get up here on this, and I'll speak for myself, and I think I could probably speak for Kevin as well, my intentions are good and they are to serve the county. I don't have an ulterior motive where I'm trying to do something. I actually interned at the Juvenile Justice System, Juvenile Justice Center, when I had my internship at Moravian Theological Seminary, when I went through my pastoral care program. I was in there. I did yoga with young men to try to, you know, de-escalate their anger. And I just want to say, I have a great respect for the Juvenile Justice Center. I had individual clients that I saw in the Juvenile Justice Center, and I know how little they get paid. My questions and my intentions were to try to figure out a justification to say that we have this many vacancies, this is how much we need to fill, this is how many people we can serve. And I appreciate what you do and what you're trying to do for not only the kids that you protect, but also the employees that I can tell that you care about.
I do.
So I just want, in the future going forward, to understand that these questions are not meant to be antagonistic. They're investigative because maybe we just don't know enough about what we need to know. And I am going to make it a point to come down there and, and maybe get another tour because I'm sure it has changed in the 20 years that I haven't been there. Just a tad. But yeah, I appreciate this conversation and our ability to have it right now. Thank you.
Anybody else from council? Once, twice? All right, before I go to Mr. Green, we will be having a meeting on the sec, third?
15th of March.
15th of March?
March 15th.
Courts and Corrections will have a meeting.
Yeah, it's in March.
All right. So make Mr. Billman available yourself, and I will con, I will reach, we will reach out to the other folks to be here so we can get more conversation on that. Now you're free to speak, sir. I addressed you.
I didn't know if you wanted to ask me any more questions, so that's why I stood up.
If not.
Back up again.
Okay. Let's move on to council's committee reports, please. Thank you, Mr. Green. Ms. Varghese Hefner.
Personnel met yesterday, the fruits of our labor were done today, and that is all. Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Finance met, and Mr. Heckman. I'd like to tell you what the fruits of our labor are, but you might want to go to the video. I, I don't know how I could concisely put it. Let's just say we had a-
It was a robust conversation.
We had a lively discussion on, on, on the bids we put out for, for the pay study and for the Greysdale. And I mean, the companies that came up gave excellent presentations. I, I, Mr. Kusak, I think, moved for both of them to come forward at the next meeting. I didn't have a problem with them. I had a problem that it took a year, but, but that's neither here nor there. We're here now, we have it, and we'll see where we go. But that, that's what it was, and I thought it was a pretty good meeting. I'm sorry, I'm done with that.
Ms. Zirinsky, before I go to-
I had a question regarding that.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Gofredo.
So I had to leave early, and I watched it on YouTube. Did I hear correctly that one of the studies came in at $600,000?
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four.
That's what I wanted to question because I was gonna say-
Sixty-four.
I know the low one was around like 38,000.
No, you did hear correctly.
They threw something out that was-
Oh, yeah, that was thrown out. One bid come in.
Right.
Yeah, and it got thrown out.
All the more reason why we should be suspect of any one bid, you know, contracts that we're signing.
Yeah, and, and he threw it out. Mr. Barron threw that right away. Right.
And something to compare it against, that's why.
And it's tough because no question, when suspicion comes up, and I, I'm guilty of it, and I have to sometimes be careful, I don't go from healthy skepticism to out and out, like accusatory. But anything under 100,000, we don't, we don't have to, council doesn't have to vote on it. So I thought, well, we put 400,000, and, and the two came in under, under 100, so the administration can, can just run with it. They don't need us. And that worried me a little bit, but how am I going to argue that they should spend more money? And, you know, I, that might be, I might be getting a little paranoid if I go that far out. But both companies came up and they did give a presentation. I think they were both sincere, and I believe they would do a good job. And, and I, hopefully they will answer some questions we have, we all have, especially with Greysdale operationally. So yeah, that was it. But it, there, there were numbers. I mean, the numbers were, it was weird how some of the, the one, I think there were no hits on it.
69, 64?
One of them had, was it the first one for pay? They only had three people.
Three people, one didn't get a bid.
Yeah. I mean, it was wild.
Non-disclosure.
Right. I was surprised by, by what had, what Mr. Barron related to us. But it was a fine meeting. I, I just didn't need him to repeat, constantly repeat a section of the administrative code.
It was a lot.
Okay.
Any, any other council reports?
Yeah, I got one.
Yes, ma'am.
But I did want to, I'll clarify something with you later on that report. I just want to say. Okay, so the bids, so anyway. No, I'm just trying to, you know, listen.
Get this under control, folks.
Yeah.
It's a fine day.
It, it is a long day, let me tell you. Okay, so Energy, Environment, and Land Use Committee met today. We had three people for public comment, Victoria Optov Cordera, Ginger Petry, and Laura Ray, all from Lower Sacan Township, talking about Sauken.
Thank you.
Lower Sauken.
I will do, who was Sauken?
Lower Sauken, right? Okay. They came from LST, man. So they're talking about the crisis with the Bethlehem landfill, and they asked us, you know, if we could assist them on the 27th of February for a hearing. I am going to follow up with Mr. Spedoni and see what the parameters of that and the liabilities might be, or the feasibility of that and what we could do. We also had a presentation from Penn Environment, Wasting Our Waterways, and also one on microplastics. I want to say that Flora Cardoni, Ms. Cardoni, stated that 5,861,055 pounds of toxic chemicals were poured into PA waterways in 2020. That's obscene. In our own, just in reproductive toxins that were in our region, there was 22,621 pounds per year in the Lehigh, in the Lehigh watershed. It's the second highest number of toxins. And that is a conservative estimate, given what they actually are able to register in the toxic release inventory. And there's more reports that could be given on that. And given that our water should be sacred, you know, I feel like we have to really start paying attention to that. And it dovetailed nicely into the presentation on the microplastics where they did a study with 300 samples in 50 waterways. And the level of microplastics that are in the water is equivalent, that we ingest is equivalent to one credit card per week. So imagine just eating a credit card every week, and it's sticking around in your body. The real problems are the endocrine disruptors and the reproductive disorders that emerge because of that. Okay, so then we had Brian Cope talking about the Wildlands Conservancy partnership, which we voted on, and also the withdrawal of the Cholora Conversation Easement. And then he will be bringing the Preserve Land Management lease agreements to us next time. Thank you.
Now, for her report, may I ask, Tara, you didn't bring up one of the most important things that came out of your committee.
Okay.
And that is the Norbath Trail is finally going to be moved into Bath from the Jacksonville Road Park. Road Park.
Do you want me to read all of the-
No, 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 don't read all of it.
Because I got them written down. I did want to try to keep it from my brief.
I know, I know, I'm just saying, I, I, as, as an advocate of that, of the quaint borough of Bath, I, I just, I'm kidding you, please, come on.
Okay, also, there's going to be like, what, four pickleball courts at Louise Moore, six pickleball courts? And, you know, Wytuck Park is getting some work done on that, too, and the Bath Borough Easement, Two Rivers Trail, the list goes on and on. Brian Cope's department is just rocking it.
Lord, give me strength. Council liaison reports. Mr. Giovanni has his hand up.
The preservation to which I am on.
Go, bro. Yee-haw.
18,898 percent, .37, and 246 farms. And they're going to be closing on some on the end of February and the beginning of March. So we may hit 24,000, but not close.
Okay. I got you, I got you.
And that's my report.
Ms. Varghese Hefner?
The GPA met on a bright and sunny, early morning in February 7th to discuss the bridge project. Right now, there are two left to be in design. There are several that are still in construction, but we are more at the end of the rainbow than we are at the beginning. There are several in maintenance, the ones that are under construction, fortunately or unfortunately, there are a lot of punch list items that just don't get done, and it's rather frustrating. But again, I, I feel optimistic, because with the two left in design and some of the work that's left to be done, it's, it's on the utilities end and not necessarily on